Eternal God, our Father, Lord God, as we enter the holiday season, Lord God, we just ask that you cover the residents that have lost loved ones over the past year. Lord God, we know this is a trying time, Lord God, and we ask that you give them peace. We give them favor, in Jesus' name, amen.
Alexander.
Present.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakos.
Warpo.
Here. Let the record show nine present, zero absent. Mayor?
Hi. Thanks, Council. Wanted to give you my report for November 28th. I wanted to say thank you to Eileen, the special events team, including members from my office, from your office, from the special events team, the Parks Department, Public Works, Fire and Police, for putting on a great tree lighting ceremony the other day. We had 200-plus people show up. We had real reindeer and hot chocolate. I think it was a great event, and I appreciate the council members that were in support that day. A lot of people worked hard. We're starting to get a lot of people to show up to our tree lighting, which is nice. So, thanks, Councilman Tyler, for hosting. I thought it turned out great. And, you know, hopefully each year it gets bigger and bigger. It seems like it's working that way so far. So, if you didn't make it this year, please try to do so next year. Wanted to talk a little bit about heavy truck route. I know you have an ordinance appearing before you that raises the proposed fine, that proposes to raise the fines for the first time since the 1980s. I'm sure you all get complaints about semi trucks, just like my office does. I talked to members of Hammond Police Department about this, even asked some council members today if they knew off the top of their head what is and isn't a truck route. And from a lot of members of the police department, from myself, from members of my staff, there was just general confusion about what is the truck route? If we see a truck, does it belong here? And I think we all know, like, Lyon Street isn't a truck route. But when trucks are on 165th, is that a truck route? 169th, is that a truck route? So, to make it easier on everybody, we're talking about developing a color-coded system throughout the city on the truck route, maybe put a sign about every block, which would require thousands of signs. So, we're in the process of developing what the sign would look like on the truck route. And we put yellow signs, for instance, that'll say Hammond Heavy Duty Truck Route, and we'll put them, like, every block on both sides of the street. So, the truckers will see these signs continuously as they're traveling through our city legally. And as soon as they get off the truck route, they turn red. We start having red in places. And if they don't see signs at all, they're on the wrong route. If they see red, they're on the wrong route. We ask, we're asking the PD to vigorously enforce this. Public Works is in the process of creating these signs right now. We're gonna pound them into the ground as soon as we get them. And you have an ordinance before you that significantly raises the fine on semis that are caught in areas they're not supposed to be. So, I ask that you give this consideration. This fine has not been raised since my dad was mayor. So, it's been a long time. The fine is literally in the hundreds of dollars. We're asking you to raise the minimum to $1,000. When a truck is pulled over and found to be violating the heavy semi truck ordinance, this, and keep in mind, it still has to go to a judge at that point. So, anyway, I appreciate you guys considering that. Wanted to update the council on the latest developments on the Plasky Park pool. Councilman Kalwinski, American Structure Point, my staff, the Park Department, my staff met this week. We think we have pretty much a proposal in the ground, as far as we, I think we're all fairly comfortable with where we are. We were looking at a proposal with three lap lanes, five-foot-deep, pool basketball court, two water slides, zero-depth entry, lots more shade, lots more seats. It would be the only pool in the city at that point. It would be in Plasky Park. Councilman Mark's putting a significant amount of money towards this project. We're using what's left of the park bond that was there basically for the past few years, and we'll still have greater than a million-dollar shortfall that I'll have to figure out how to patch up. But I feel comfortable about where we are. We know that we're not gonna be swimming in this pool in 2023. So, we're not in a big hurry right now. We're finishing up the bid. We'll be going to bid, I believe, if we decide in the spring. Is that?
March.
March.
About April.
Right. So, we'll get it back in April, and we'll start moving forward with that project. So, I think it's a long time waiting. I feel comfortable about where we are. I met with Ministerial Alliance this week also. Not all the members of the Ministerial Alliance. Pastor Polk and Pastor Sanders came to City Hall, talking about MLK Park. I wanted to fill them out on where they were. Councilwoman Berry, Councilwoman Katrina, and I have been speaking about this issue as well. The Ministerial Alliance, I think that the Ministerial Alliance wants to move forward. I'm comfortable moving forward. I'm sure, I know the council people and I haven't talked about this recently, but if we are gonna move forward and reopen the courts, we have to implement our parking restrictions and enforce the parking restrictions tightly on Highland, on Lyons, anywhere around the court. So, it'll be easy to walk up to the courts. It'll be easy to ride your bike to the courts. It may not be as easy to drive your car there. So, we're gonna give it a shot. Hopefully, the violence goes away. But I could tell you that if violence, if those courts continue, I will shut them down myself. I'll drive the tractor on them and destroy them if we continue to have violence out there. So, these courts have been shut down for the greater part of the last four months. Obviously, we spent a lot of money to develop this area. We wanted it to be a nice asset to the community, and hopefully, we can get back to that position again. So, I felt good after meeting with the ministers. I know the councilmen and I, we talked a little bit about it today, but we're gonna be talking about it a lot more in the future. And hopefully, by the spring, we see young people out there playing basketball again. You have two issues before you in regards to city-issue ID cards, one ordinance, one resolution. I'm gonna let the councilperson that sponsored the ordinance, Councilman Torres, speak as to the, that ordinance. I know he, it's, if it's approved by the council, it'll be sent to the General Assembly, asking them to take action in regards to the ordinance that we're passing, which is asking the city of Hammond to come up with the city ID for undocumented citizens, DACA recipients, non-naturalized American citizens, people that have trouble getting ID, maybe you can't get a driver's license. So, it could be seniors. Basically, it'll be good in the city of Hammond, last Mars, Gene Shepherd Center. If you get pulled over, it's good identification. It's not gonna, may get you into a restaurant, may get you beer if you show them. It's not gonna, if you're 21 and older, obviously, but it's not gonna get you, you know, you're not gonna be able to drive because you have it. How about that? You're not gonna be able, you know. But it, other cities do have these city-issue ID cards, city of South Bend, city of Elkhart. This program works very well. I think we have a significant percentage of our citizens that could benefit from this program. They maybe can't get an ID because they're DACA recipients, for instance, so this could help them out. So, I'd ask the council to consider that. It's on first and second reading. Pending before you also, you have a proposal from NWI Home and LLC, which is a $28 million investment into the Bay County Met Building in downtown Hammond. It's gonna be 100-plus market rate units when it's all said and done, 8,000 square feet of new retail space. Originally, we were supposed to get this project done for $5 million. The developers came back to us. This is all done before inflation, before pandemics, supply chain issues, labor shortages. Developers came back and asked us to consider another $750,000 with, from the five original. It's 5.75. They've experienced significant cost increase. Their project is in excess of $28 million. So, if you think about 5.75 on top of 28, that's 1/6. That's right in the ballpark of where we usually are, between 1/5th and 1/6. So, I'd ask the council to consider that. It's an important project in downtown Hammond. We all do know that, I mean, we've experienced a lot of the inflation, supply chain, and labor shortage issues ourselves with ARP, which is what I'm gonna talk about next. To give you an update on where they stand right now with this project, the first floor is entirely demolished and abated, 90% complete. The second and the third floors are completed, 100% abated and demolished. The fourth floor is what they're working on right now. They plan to take occupancy of this building in the spring of 2024. So, that project's moving along. And last but not least, ARP 2.0 is pending before you. We've been talking about this a long time. It's a continuation of the ARP projects that we presented in 1.0. We originally hoped to get new projects done in 2.0, but as it turns out, 2.0 is mostly cleaning up the cost overruns from 1.0, if approved. We do have one issue that we're taking out in 2.1, which is another ARP proposal we'll submit to you down the road. It involves Fire Station Number Two, which is gonna be built. We just don't know if we want to do it with ARP money, as we planned to do with 1.0. So, we're gonna be coming back to the council shortly, probably within the next month or two, with what we're gonna call ARP 2.1, which is gonna ask you to take the money out of Station Two, the Robertsdale Firehouse, because we're gonna pay for it another way. We're not gonna pay for it with ARP. And then we'll use that money to finance a project in the Third District, which is the Memorial Park Project, which is the infrastructure that we plan to do with 2.0. So, even though Memorial Park is not in 2.0, I wanna put it on the record that it is gonna be in part of 2.1. But we just aren't ready to put it there yet. I indicated this earlier to Councilman Katrina, Councilwoman Katrina, and Councilman Berry, and I'm repeating it in front of the council so I can put it on the record. But that's where we're going with this, because I don't want residents of the Third District to think that we're ignoring them. So, that's all I got. I don't know if you have any questions, but if you do, I'm more than happy. Hi.
The ARP money, I understand, I'm moving to 6 million.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the last of it then, or is there some more still in the fund?
No. We did, in all clarity, in all transparency, excuse me, we calculated lost revenue. You know, we were allowed to use ARP money for our budget. We used none in ARP 1.0. We did a lost revenue calculation in excess of $7 million. Is that accurate, Megan? Higher? 24 million? Okay. So, this is important, because we could have used up to $24 million of lost revenue. We could have used our ARP money to plug our budget. Instead, we chose a bunch of capital projects. In round two, we're asking the council to consider $2 million of ARP money to put towards the budget, towards lost revenue. Keep in mind, we could have used 24 million. We didn't. We're asking you to consider $2 million. That's in 2.0. Okay? So, that's for the budget, Councilman Mark. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
And I did, like I said, with Memorial Park. I wish we would have, it's my fault that we didn't get the Station Two BOT worked out before we came to you with 2.0. So, we're working on that right now. And once that's cleared up, I'm gonna be back for the council with the Memorial Park money. That'll be what we call 2.1. Okay? That's all I got, council.
Councilman Kalwinski?
Yes, sir.
Is there still a meeting on this week regarding?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's when?
30th.
The 30th?
30th, 5:30.
I'm glad you brought that up. So, yes, we're doing a community meeting in Robertsdale in regards to development of Clark High School fields. Mayor's Night Out in December is being rescheduled. Councilman Scott, we're gonna reschedule it to early January. I wanted to put you on notice. There was a conflict that came up, and we're rescheduling the December Mayor's Night Out. The word went out. I'm not sure if you received it already. I think it's early January when they rescheduled it. So, I wanna put you on notice right now. Okay?
All right. Thank you.
So, please, if you're planning, if you're watching and planning on attending the December Mayor's Night Out, because of a scheduling conflict, we scheduled it into early January, still counts towards 2022. Councilman Scott, we're doing the Sixth District in 2023 twice. Okay? So, we'll have seven Mayor's Night Outs next year. I'm not gonna skip the Sixth for this year. So, we'll do the Sixth.
An email I got said it was rescheduled to Jan- January 4th?
Yes, that sounds right.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Just for clarity then, the plant field project meeting is 5:30 November 30th in the Clipper Room?
Correct. Is it 5:30, Kevin?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, sir. That's, that's a go. The other one's not. Mayor's Night's rescheduled to the 4th. And I'm sorry it took so long. There's a lot of things going on, as you can imagine. Any questions? Thank you, guys, for everything. Appreciate it. Happy Thanksgiving. Happy holidays.
Item number four, approval of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Motion, accept the minutes from November 14, 2022, and be placed on file, please.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item number five, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali, or Rakos.
Make motion, prove claims dated 11/21/22, and ending with claims dated 11/22/22. Claim number 6578 through claim number 7164, an amount of $12,506,336.26.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, Roll Call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number six, public hearings. There are none. Item number seven, communications. Does anybody have any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
The Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Eticapper Omega Chapter, is having a holiday bazaar on Sunday, December 11th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Dynasty Banquet Center. The cost is $50. They wanted us to just put it on record that they wanted to invite the council and the mayor out to the event.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kalwinski.
Thank you. Got notice that Plasky Park Neighborhood Association meeting will be meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, at 6:30 till 8:00 at the Hammond Mohawks Club at 141st and 13th Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the communications? Does anybody else have anything on the communications? Hearing none, communications are now closed. Item number seven, eight, committee reports.
Mr. President. Yes, I'd like to report on the Capital Improvement Board meeting from November 21st. We approved $6,376.96 for supplemental pavement preservation, which is crack ceiling. We also approved $18,652.52 for the Chicago Street Phase Two Project. And we also approved $35,905.11 for City Hall video surveillance improvements. The next meeting will be December 5th, work-study session at 4:30 p.m., and the meeting will be at 5:00 p.m. Moving on to community and crime watch groups. Edison Community Watch will meet Wednesday, December 7th, at Edison School, beginning at 6:30 p.m. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, December 6th, 6:00 p.m., at the VFW on Holman Avenue, across from Harrison Park. Irving Community Watch will meet Friday, December 2nd, 9:15 a.m., at Irving School. And Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, December 14th, 6:30 p.m., at Calumet College, up in Robertsdale. As usual, if you see anything suspicious, please call our police department. 911, of course, is the number. And please attend a community or crime watch meeting. You'll be able to give the police tips about what's going on in your neighborhood, and you'll also be able to find out what's going on in your neighborhood. Because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Hearing no more committee reports. Committee reports are now closed. Item number nine, ordinances, third reading and final passage. We are none. Item number 10, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance number 22-49, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance to further appropriate from the ARPA Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for purposes that fulfill the intent of the American Rescue Plan Act. Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
For first and second reading, refer to council as a whole, with the meeting set for December 12th, 2022, at 5:15, and a public hearing set for December 12th, 2022.
Second.
Been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item B, ordinance 22-50, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance to appropriate monies into the 2022 American Rescue Plan Fund, 2410 from 2021, previously appropriated American Rescue Plan funds.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading, refer to council as a whole, with the meeting December 12th at 5:15 p.m., and also a public hearing on December 12th.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
As we discussed in caucus, this is simply a housekeeping ordinance, moving unspent monies from the ARP fund in 2021 to, unspent monies, remind you, from 2021 to the current year. That was difficult. Thank you.
I don't know what I'm gonna say half the time, but I knew what you were gonna say. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item C, ordinance 22-51, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance creating a new fund, Fund Number 2472, for Justice Assistant Grant Program Funds, ordered to the city of Hammond Police Department. Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
First and second reading, refer to council as a whole, with the meeting set for December 12th, 2022, for 5:15.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
The funds for this grant goes for personnel, equipment, supplies, and training for the police department.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item D, ordinance 22-52, sponsored by Councilman Rakos, and ordinance to amend ordinance 3890, 4934, 6009, 7972, 8172, 8328, 8750, and 9343, also known as Chapter 73, Section 99 of Title 8 of the Hammond Municipal Code, as it pertains to penalties for violating the uniform operation of truck traffic within the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Move for first and second reading of 22-52, council as a whole, on December 12th.
Second.
5:15.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
This is an update of truck route violations. There hasn't been a update since '85, apparently. Minimum was only $200. Now, the minimum will be $1,000, up to a maximum of $2,500. With all the traffic, truck traffic we have in the new, the streets we've been trying to maintain, it's important to update this ordinance.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I just wanna echo that I feel like all of us have gotten a lot of complaints about truck traffic in places where it's not supposed to be. And I feel like this ordinance gets at, I think, the three actions that will help us curb some of that, which is raising the amount of the fine, as well as putting more signage on the actual truck route and off the truck route, and then, of course, enforcement by our police department. So, hopefully, this will solve some of those issues that we've been seeing.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item E, ordinance 22-53, sponsored by the Hammond Redevelopment Commission. That was the petitioner, excuse me, and the sponsor was Councilman Torres. And ordinance amending ordinance number 9511 of the Hammond Common Council, authorizing the city of Hammond, Indiana, to issue one or more series of its economic development revenue bonds and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto at 415 Sibley, the Three Corners Project, and Bank Calumet, the Northwest Indiana Project.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
This ordinance is to update the finances at Calumet Bank, which is presently being rehabbed and reconstructed into apartment buildings, and is on pace to open up or be ready by spring of 2024. Thank you. Or refer to council as a whole.
Let's, let's introduce it on first and second reading.
Okay. I move for first.
Is there a second? Second. Councilman, Councilman Kalwinski raised his hand. Okay, now.
Okay. Refer to council as a whole. Committee meeting on the 12th at 5:30.
And then what you said after that, right?
What's that?
Then you just, you spoke on it already, right?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Is there any further discussion? Okay, wait a minute. Is there, we got introduced and second. There we go. I got confused there for a second. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item F, ordinance 22-54, sponsored by Councilman Torres, and ordinance creating a new section known as Section of the Hammond Municipal Code, establishing municipal identification cards.
President.
Councilman Torres.
Move for first and second reading.
Motion's been made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Okay. Refer to council as a whole, with a committee meeting on the 12th at 5:30.
Is that it?
Okay. And this ordinance establishes city identifications cards for immigrations, for immigrants who choose to reside in Hammond. The city ID card shall be accepted and recognized by all city departments and affiliates entities as a valid form of ID. The program will, will be run by the city clerk's office, and therefore, they shall be issuing the cards. I wanna thank, at this time, also Mayor McDermott for his full support of this ordinance. He and the city attorney work hard on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I would like to be added as a co-sponsor for this ordinance.
So noted. Did somebody else say something? Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it.
President Warpo, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Moving on to item number 11, resolutions.
Item A, resolution 22R-19 sponsored by Councilman Spitali. A resolution adopting a supplemental community investment plan, version two, for the City of Hammond for the use of funds provided under the American Rescue Plan Act.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
For final passage of 22R-19.
Second.
Is there any discuss, a motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson, is there any discussion?
President.
Councilman Spitali.
We need additional appropriation investigation of ARPA. Funds is necessary for both finalized version 1.0 projects to move forward and version 2.0 planned projects.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vinesz.
Yes.
Kowinski. Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item B, resolution 22R-20 sponsored by Councilman Torres. A resolution of the common council of the City of Hammond endorsing and urging passage of Indiana legislation establishing driver cards for undocumented Indiana residents.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I move for final passage of resolution 20R-20.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilwoman Vinesz, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
This resolution encourages the Indiana State Legislative to provide a driver's card to make it easily identifiable and distinguishable identification that will be valid for operation of a motor vehicle. And we, the members of the Hammond Council, Common Council, endorse and urge the passage of state legislation to provide a pathway for undocumented Indiana residents to be able to obtain a driver's card. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I would also like to be added as a sponsor for this resolution, thank you.
So noted.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vinesz.
I would like to be added as well. I think we should all be added.
Council as a whole?
Yes.
So noted.
Mr. President. I would like to add that I'd like to thank the City of Alcart for providing a copy of their resolution that they passed. I borrow a lot of their language. Also, the City of Ishikago, especially City Clerk Medina. He faxed me a copy of the resolution they passed back in June. So, I'd like to thank them for their cooperation.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vinesz.
Yes.
Kowinski. Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warpo, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick, item number 12, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I would like to make a motion that re- reappoint Mr. Greg Myrick to the Redevelopment Commission.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Tyler, seconded by Councilman Kowinski, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Just want to state that Mr. Myrick has been on the Redevelopment Commission. I think he just completed his 11th year, so this will be his 12th year. Just want to thank him for his service and for his commitment to that board.
Is there any further discussion?
Does a darn good job on that board, thank you for, put on again, you deserve it.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vinesz.
Yes.
Kowinski. Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
In light of the holidays, we will be doing the annual holiday treats toy giveaway. The event will take place on December 15th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Hammond Civic Center parking lot. It will be a drive-through one more time this year, we will have a pre-registration for it. It is for Hammond residents only. What we are asking currently is we are seeking donations of toys, new toys unwrapped that can be delivered to the, any Hammond fire station, the Civic Center, Hammond YMCA, to City Hall, Morton High School, or to Hammond Central High School. Toys will be for the ages of zero to 17. We're hoping that we'll have enough toys this year, that last year we were able to bless 600 kids. We want to even double that number this year if we're possible. So we want to thank our current sponsors, of course, the Hammond City Council, we appreciate you. Mayor Thomas McDermott, the Hammond Parks Department, the Hammond Police Department, the Hammond Fire Department, the Hammond, the Ministerial Alliance of Hammond, and Vicinity, and the Hammond YMCA. So, we're looking forward to that event, and of course, we have our holiday parade this Saturday at 10:00 a.m., we hope to see everyone out, it starts at Gavin and ends at the Swerkslex, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Hearing none, new and unfinished business is now closed. Item number 13, public expression, our first speaker, I remind everybody to keep it around three minutes, please. And our first speaker is Linda Angie Yano. Did I get it?
Gee.
Gee.
That's great, that's great, okay.
Number 27.
All right, I got my timer going here, all right. First of all, I would like to thank the entire city council, especially Pete Torres for the resolution. I brought that to his attention and he just took off with it. And none of the members of Cossetta who have this campaign going in Indiana were able to attend, but I know that they're watching, and so I'm sure they're very grateful for the passage of this resolution. I also want to thank both the mayor and Pete Torres for introducing ordinance around this issue and it's ordinance F on the agenda. And I'm personally happy about that, I can't speak for Cossetta about that. And I'm also have a copy of an article that was in the Northwest Times that Liz just made a copy of, tricky trying to get a copy of a long article from online. And it's about the governor, Indiana Governor Holcomb's trip to Egypt where he met with world leaders on the environment. And I ask you to please read that, we, there's some of us with a resilience committee we want to start some actions in Hammond that will coincide with other cities and towns in this area. And the governor really encapsulate why that is important. And we're also going to be in the very near future talking about the 30 by 30 initiative. So, I will also send you a copy of that. And it, it doesn't cost anything, it's a community residence commission to create some advice and suggestions on how to make our area get more sustainable renewable resources. So, I want to thank you very much for that. This 30 by 30 initiative would also fit in with preserving 30% of the land we have, making it safe, protecting it by the year 2030. So that really ties in with the other issue that I have also spoken about, which is the Briar East Woodland Dunes, which I believe Ken is going to speak about. I also want to remind you that PDA is having their holiday party, it's the first one in three years because of COVID. And because I was sick for almost four weeks, I wasn't able to print out the copy of the invitation, but I will send it to Liz. And it's on Friday, December 9th. I would need advance notice if you can come because we have to provide a headcount. And it's $15, all-inclusive at Aurelia's Pizza in Griffith, starting at 6:00 p.m. 2 minutes and 59 seconds on the nose.
Thank you. Ken?
Greetings, everybody. Greetings, Mr. President. Councilwomen and men. I was going to talk about climate change this time and go into, you know, how the world is going to be two degrees hotter by 2050, how the last seven years have been the hottest on record. That Indiana will have an average of 40 extreme heat days by 2050. And that we rarely have any of those now, what an extreme heat day is, any time that the temperature gets over 90 degrees plus high humidity for two or three days in a row. By 2050, Northwest Indiana will see a 17% increase in heavy rain events. I'm tying this all together because I just received an email today from someone, I'm getting stuff from everybody these days, they keep sending me stuff, this was something that would have slipped by me normally, it's from the, it's from the sanitary district of Hammond. And they're talking about, you know, trying to borrow some money from the Little Calumet River Basin Development Commission, a million dollars. But what it says in here is that, you know, we have been mandated, I'm sure you guys all know about this, but we have been mandated by the Environmental Protection Agency and the Indiana Department of Environmental Management to correct the problem. We have not been good environmental managers in this town. We have let this go for decades, we pollute Lake Michigan and the rivers all the time. And we just let it slide, let it slide, let it slide. These CSO's, they call it, contribute to violations of water quality standards and inhibit the receiving water from attaining its designated use and can result in high concentrations of pathogens, chemicals, unsightly floatables, and fish kills. To combat the problem, the U.S. EPA and IDM have mandated CSO communities like Hammond to fix the problem. The total cost of the Hammond Sanitary District, LTCP, may exceed $300 million. It's in the letter here. So, we're asking for a million dollars right now just for the design aspects of this, you know what that is? That is mismanagement being handed down in taxes to the residents. This is the cost of environmental mismanagement. We have been polluting the lakes and rivers and now it's going to cost us. A million dollars is nothing, that's just a drop in the bucket, Hammond's end on this will be $63 million. Okay, coming up, you'll see that coming up in the next two or three years. And guess what, all of your real estate taxes. Excuse me, Mr. Rakos? That's typical. The taxes are going to go up for everybody because of this, and then you have to ask the question, have we learned any lessons here? Have we learned any lessons? I see not, because now the council has, in the beginning of this concept, decided to go 9-0 and do a development that will add 1,890,000 gallons of water in a two-inch rain to our water system. Okay? There you go. It's going to cost us more, higher taxes, talk to your children, talk to your grandchildren, tell them what you're going to do. Thank you.
Clifton Graham.
And we should have had a Hessfelds mayor's night out in 2022. That's not fair, and somebody should stand up for us.
Clifton Graham.
No.
I have a correction, I said none of the Cossetta members were here, but we have one of the active leaders here, Domingo Cortez.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Pardon me?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
How are you doing, city council? My name is Clifton Graham, I'm a landlord on 235, 237 Ogden. For approximately over 10 years, I would say. I purchased the property with the intention on using three units. But unfortunately, when I went to court, they converted it to a two-unit for some reason and I had to do some things that I thought was, was going to be no problem. But 10 years later, I'm having the same problem. And I would like the city council to address that ordinance. I don't have an ordinance number, but I have the unfit dwelling, that's 96.1058. And I'd just like you to review it because I was under the intention and through the previous inspector that I was going to be allowed to rent, but unfortunately I wasn't allowed to rent. And I'm getting my day in court next month, 10 years so later. But in the meantime, I've also been taxed as a three-unit. So when I go to Lake County, it says I have a three-unit. So my taxes coming back here is as a three-unit. And so if I'm going to be a two-unit here, I'm looking at that I should only be paying two-unit taxes. But everything is saying on my information from Lake County that they're taxing me based upon I have a three-unit. And so I want to try to, they told me in order to get that taken care of, I need to come to you all to make sure you correct that. Because if you no longer use the basement and it's a two-unit, then I shouldn't be taxed as a three-unit. So, I was wanting that somebody can help me so we can clear it up, so I can get my money back, you know, get it adjusted. And then also with my property, make a clear cut what's going on in the basement of my apartment because they're doing some restrictions that wouldn't allow me to even use it for certain things. So I would like to, us to revisit that ordinance if we could to see if we can amend some of the things because of some of the things I've seen in the last 10 or 12 years. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Alexander, seconded by Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Alexander, seconded by Councilman Rakos. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, meeting adjourned.
Did we have a photo of the resolution being announced?